Yes, sir. Mr. Battle, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semis.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And we're set to go. And talk to that.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. City Council, at your request during the October 22 public work session, you were provided an overview of current usage and survey information from surrounding localities, along with recommendations on the said for use of the City Council Chamber. On November 12, you hosted a public hearing for citizens to have input. Tonight, Mr. Solomon H. Ashby, City Attorney, will revisit the discussion.
Junior.
I forgot that, Ms. Ashby. Mr. Solomon H. Ashby, Junior.
You're right.
This Danny reminds him of that. The City Attorney will revisit and discuss the City Council Chamber policy. The second, I have two. The second presentation tonight, conditional zoning. At last night's public work session briefing on ocean marine rezoning application, City Council requested a briefing on the state court requirements regarding the use of conditional zoning. Tonight, Deputy Senator, City Manager Bob Baldwin will provide a summary of conditional zoning and the use of proffers in conjunction with zoning applications. Mr. Ashby.
Sorry?
If everybody would turn their phones off.
I thought it was off.
And if you have a need to talk, please go in the lobby.
Just making sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As Dr. Patton had said, City Council entertained this discussion in October where we first discussed the City Council Chamber policies and proposed policy moving forward. And at City Council's request, we had a public hearing where you provided an opportunity for members of the public to comment, and you did receive some of those comments. And so today, we return in order to address the issue from a Housekeeping standpoint and revisit the discussion you had, as well as the policy that was proposed at that time and has since been shared with the public. I won't go through all of this, but I will summarize what we discussed originally back in October. And I will simply say with regard to this, the City Council Chamber is a facility of certain import because it is addressed in your city code in terms of its purpose and its location to facilitate City Council activities and meetings. As we have always talked about, and we get into this discussion periodically, the City Council Chambers is, has a particular purpose and is a limited form in order to conduct public business. We have discussed the fact that federal communication laws do impact fair access if we were to broaden the utilization of that City Council Chamber. This again is a slide that you all saw in October when we discussed this matter initially. Here we go again with some classic discussions from the U.S. Supreme Court as it relates to the limited public forum. Those principles apply both to the utilization of the City Council Chambers, as well as other forms such as the, where we typically discuss, non-agenda speakers and the purposes for which you take information from the non-agenda speakers. The principles that apply to non-agenda speakers also would apply to that facility, which is the City Council Chambers. You will recall, we did a survey.
Just as a matter of curiosity, the citation on the second paragraph, is that Chesfield County, Virginia?
Yes. Yes, that is a Virginia site. As you all will recall, we did survey localities in the area in terms of utilization of the City Council Chambers, and there was a general limitation on the utilization of City Council Chambers across the six cities, I believe, that we surveyed at that time. And so that brings us to the proposed policy and where we are today. The policy states, "The Portsmouth City Council Chamber shall remain a limited form available for the public good so long as the facility is readily available, and such use does not impair the operation of the city by the appearance of partisan participation and the need to provide equal and opposing viewpoints or access." You all will recall in the earlier discussion, much of this discussion was about availability and the hardships that would be created if the City Council Chamber became available at all times to any of a number of people. You will recall, Ms. White provided you historical reference to those entities that utilized the City Council Chambers, and there was a limited number of uses in the past. You all will also recall, I believe there was a discussion about utilization for city purposes and a pending request from the Treasurer to use it for city purposes. And so those were the limited uses that existed and that provides the universe of uses that would be in contemplation. Again, the second point being that the video access and the video facilities, as well as the broadcast facilities, have another layer of concern and address in that if they were to be utilized on a broader basis, we would have some issues with regard to compliance with the FCC and our PEG requirements, our public education and government access requirements as it relates to Cox Cable and the cable TV stations. So we discussed that quite a bit at the last occasion. And so the policy essentially here enumerates what has been the past practice. That is, the clerk, in consultation with the city manager and the city attorney, will monitor any third-party request to utilize the City Council's Chamber to ensure that it would only be used in adherence with these guidelines, that being a public purpose and that it would not create a proliferation of uses whereby it would start to impact both resources and time commitments for the City Council. Why will I not say today that we'll be limited to only those uses we have done historically? Partly, that's the lawyer in me, so you never say never. But there again, any new request would have to be evaluated under these same guidelines, understanding that we cannot throw that facility open to anyone looking to rent a hall, as some might say.
Any questions? Is that your last slide?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Solomon? With the issue before us, Senator, are you comfortable, are we comfortable with this policy?
It's a sort of status quo.
Let's make sure.
I would say so, yes, yes. The intention is the whole to satisfy.
Are we comfortable enough to ask, do we need now to codify this in some resolution that we adopt?
I spoke with Ms. White, and in our discussions, we believe, given that this has been published, that she maintained this with the, with her records, and that can be produced to anyone inquiring. I don't know that it truly rises to the level of a City Council rule or a resolution from that standpoint, but we did make the point that we probably do need to maintain that in a public place and make it readily available to anyone inquiring.
We have stated, though, that we would adopt this in a regular meeting, and...
That's your choice.
Yes. I, for one, think that we ought to put it on the next regular agenda and adopt it as a matter of course, so that it's a matter of record.
Can we call it a council rule?
You can.
Would that make it something?
Well, let's see where we are. Elizabeth, are you comfortable first, and then comfortable when?
I'm fine with this, and if we want to make it a rule or policy or whatever, I'm fine with it.
Paul.
I don't like any use. Maybe we can designate another area or something, but I don't, I don't like it.
Any.
I'm okay with it.
I'm good with that.
Yes, and yes.
Yes, and yes.
Yes, and yes. Okay. Phil. Put it in a statement of policy that we can adopt at the next council meeting.
All right. We'll do that.
Make sure all of that.
Mr. Baldwin will come forward with the conditional zoning that will also speak to use of proffers in conjunction with rezoning application.
And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council. And following up on last night's discussion, where City Council is inquiring about conditional zoning, use of proffers, we'll give you a kind of a short summary of how proffers are used, and we'll go over what we'll call the 10 essential features of proffers. I think it will help kind of encapsulate what proffers are all about. Now, this is a construct for land use regulation that's only used in Virginia this way, and so this is not something that's shared across other states. Many other states use other tools, impact fees, and other types of things. Virginia, this is under 15.22296 of the state code, and that just really describes the ability of proffers. This authority's been out for a number of years. Portsmouth has been using conditional zoning and proffers for decades, so this is not a new thing for the city of Portsmouth. Generally speaking, the concept of using conditional zoning or proffers is applied at a time in which it is determined that the standard zoning authorities may not give you enough control over property to make you comfortable in doing a rezoning, map amendment, as they would call it, and therefore you might want some additional voluntary restrictions placed on the property that would be applied by a property owner. And the term that's used in Virginia under the, under the planning jargon is use of proffers. And as we can see in the first one, we'll just kind of go through these 10 features. I'll mention, this comes from an Albemarle County Land Use Handbook. They are pretty much the, the community that has, keeps this book up to date, and when the planners are trained throughout the state on use of proffers, we refer back to the Albemarle County Land Use Handbook. This is updated July of 2019, so this is current. And as I point out here, the owner is promising to perform an act, donate money, land services or products now. In Portsmouth, we have never used cash proffers, and I know the mayor and the city attorney last night talked a little bit about the General Assembly in recent years dealing with some of the proffers. And I've talked about that, but primarily, they were really getting engaged, a lot of issues dealing with either cash proffers or sort of coerced public improvements that were being negotiated as part of a, of a rezoning application. And as I mentioned, you know, the purpose of proffers is the ability to impose additional conditions that you can't do unilaterally. The state does not allow the city to impose conditions in a rezoning, but it does allow an applicant, a property owner, and an application to voluntarily impose conditions, and that's what you see in number two. One of the things to keep in mind there, it does not allow the applicant to argue for lesser regulation or to modify a standard in a lesser way. It has to be more restrictive. If it's anything, it's the same or more restrictive. There's another really critical point. Proffers must be voluntary, and as he points out in here, during the course of a staff review, we will typically sit down with an applicant if we're concerned about some of the implications or impacts of their use on surrounding properties and discuss whether or not they would like to address that through proffers. And a lot of times, we'll do this in our pre-application meeting. It is a point of reference, the application you have before you tonight also had conditions placed on it in 2014, so this is again, something we've done pretty commonly in the city. In this case, what you want is the applicant to address any conditions or concerns or risks to adjacent properties that have been identified during the course of a rezoning application review. And as the code requires, the proffers must be related to the rezon. As mentioning, some other localities have at least been accused of trying to get off-site improvements done, fix a library, things that may not be really germane to that application. The state's pretty clear that they must be related to the, to the rezoning. And there's a whole series of case law and, and issues that relate to this that are, that are covered, if you get into more detail on it. But the bottom line is, when you submit a proffer, and we are discussing proffers, it has to be related to that rezoning, the impacts of that rezoning.
Can you go back to four and explain that last sentence?
Okay. So what happens in this case, you know, the proffers go with the land, and so, for example, if we go back to proffers that were existing in Portsmouth prior to the 2010 zoning, no matter what the zoning was, when you change the zoning, the proffers go with the land. So whatever you might have allowed, whatever conditions you might have applied through those proffers, they stay with the land. So they would have gathered a vested right in that thing, so no matter what you did to the zoning, those proffers stay there. Quite often, that can be, it can be confusing, and sometimes it can be, cause some complications of trying to get somebody through a review process, but that's what would happen. So if we were to throw out all the zoning classification today and drop something new in there, all the proffers that have been previously approved by all previous councils remain in effect. So they don't go away. You can't make them go away. The applicant has to voluntarily come in with another application, request the proffers be, as the property owner has to request that. Again, talking being consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's sort of a standard language that you got to be operating within the confines of your normal land use program. And again, as I was just mentioning, you know, once they're accepted by the governing body, once you approve a rezoning, those properties, those proffers run with the land unless it's rezoned again. And again, the application you have before you tonight isn't exactly in that set of circumstances. They must be in writing. Last night, you asked for a copy of the proffers for the ocean marine, and that's what you see, that was in writing. We require that on the Portsmouth application process that comes in as part of the application. If you look at number eight there, they have to, the actual state code requirement is for the proffers to be done in writing before it gets to your public hearing. Again, we do that in front of the Planning Commission, so the public and the Planning Commission can weigh in on, on the proffers in the first stage of the process. But according to the state code, the final version of the proffers, again, their final version, and this shows how they could modify sometimes, and of course, the process, will they have to be done before it gets to your public hearing. Once you open the public hearing, those proffers in writing become the proffers, and they're, as I noticed there, they, they stay in effect, and in most cases, the proffers then can't be modified as a result of the public hearing or conversation with council unless you go back and have another public hearing. So say you're between first and second reading, and somebody wanted to change proffers, you'd have to have another public hearing to reengage the discussion on proffers. And again, that's allowed public input.
But only the applicant can make the change.
That's correct.
Counsel can't pick and choose.
That's correct. So the applicant brings you the proffers, and again, in that case, if you, if you had accepted proffers and they came back later and decided to modify, and they came back before you, you either can't change them. If you're going to consider changing them, you'd have to have a public hearing.
Paul.
When you have a business to come to the city and apply for a use permit, I remember last night, the mayor was saying that the courts will allow them to do whatever they want to do with that particular land use in reference to what it was in the past.
I don't think I said that, but...
What was, that what you were saying?
Yes, sir.
Well, it is my understanding in the past that when you go into a property and you apply for a use permit, and say, for instance, the property was a barber shop, and you applied to make it a grocery store, the only thing that you are entitled to by law is to come in with a barber shop. If you're going to do something else, then the City Council has to set the guidelines and the agencies under.
Well, the way...
So you can't, what I'm trying to say is, so you can't come to a boat storage repair facility for private and then expect for that to be a grandfathered clause for a military repair station.
Okay, so the way, the way our zoning works, within each district, we'll kind of go to the beginning, within each district, if you look in the use table, there's a series of uses that are permitted in each district. Some of those are permitted by right, some of those require a use permit. And in some cases, there might be a piece of property where the use they want to do is not allowed in that district that the property is zoned. In that case, they would come to rezon the property. Okay, so that's the first step. So once they get into the zoning they want, again, we have a list of things permitted by right, and you may have uses that are restricted by proffers. If you might, in the first rezoning, they might have put proffers on, say, I'm only going to use it for, again, I'll use the application before you tonight, we're only going to build autumn care facility on this piece of property, and that's what's currently permitted at 409 McLean. And of course, once autumn care decided not to build there, you've got a piece of property that literally has no use until council and the property owner come to some agreement on that. But that's the proffer they put into place in that time was, it's going to be autumn care, and it's going to look like this, and they had a rendering. Now, in that case, the only thing they can use in that piece of property would be an autumn care. But in, but in most cases, you might have a proffer, you might still have all those lists of permitted uses on the property that are allowed, and, you know, whatever restrictions might have been put in place if there's a proffer. When you get to a use permit, that's another, you know, it's a subset of all those uses within that category, and that might be a use, and use your example, if a barber shop required a use permit, and a grocery store also required a use permit, and they were different, yes, you'd have to switch use permits. You'd have to come in and say, I'm not doing a barber shop, I'm doing, so this, but these are talking about, we're talking about zoning, we're not talking about use permits in this case. But if it was a use permit, you'd have to look and see if the proposed use either was permitted by right, or if they needed another use permit for it.
So what, what is the situation?
So the situation of an ocean marine, you had a, you had a use with restricted use on it through proffers. You know, it's not a condition, it's through a condition. So what is allowed in the proffers that were applied over there? That's what they're allowed to do, and that goes with the property, as I was just describing, forever. And the only way to change off of that is to modify the proffers, and that's a rezoning application through City Council.
Okay, so they're not entitled to do anything but what's been done there at the payers? Thank you.
Yeah. They have a permit, they have a conditional zoning for that use.
Thank you.
And again, just sort of getting down to the last parts of the state code gets into, we did talk about it has to be signed by the property owner. They're having some modifications, and I'll go back a little bit to something the mayor had mentioned last night. There's been a couple of changes to the proffer laws. The General Assembly in 2016 changed some of the proffers, primarily dealing with residential projects, and they put a lot of very punitive measures in it. If a locality, for example, if, if I was to talk to somebody about a proffer, and then they decided not to proffer, council turned them down, there would be a presumption, you turned it down because I talked to them, they didn't do it, stuff like that in there. And so there was a presumption of the developer's right, and the council could get overturned kind of automatically, and that had a, kind of a chilling effect across the state as most localities stopped talking to, as we did, we're the city attorney, we stopped talking to developers with residential conditional zoning, because we're not talking about it because it's too much of a risk for us to even engage in the conversation. I mentioned back here on, on number three, they talked about after the locality is identifying impacts, we would not have that conversation with a residential project under the 2016 proffer law change. And they modified it again last year in 2019, it's less punitive. We are still trying to stay as much as we can out of residential proffers and using other, other tools and techniques to get to that. And those were the two big changes. So that's still an ongoing battle, and that's mostly a battle that's being waged in communities that have high growth, and they have very expensive proffers in some places, $20,000 per unit kind of of cash proffers, sometimes more than that. Sometimes, again, they were requiring public improvements, we want you to build a fire station or, or do something in the museum or something, and developers were arguing, those were unfair. So that's the bottom line on that. Where we are tonight, again, I think is pretty straightforward, according to the rules here, you had an applicant submit a conditional zoning application, we discussed concerns with them about, and you'll see in the materials, you'll get the 1999 rezoning that had proffers with it. We raised the same issues were raised in 1999 about impacts on the pavilion. They've re-established proffers, and they went another step with us by restricting other uses so that in the event they did not continue on for a long period of time, you would not then be subjected to all sorts of uses under the IN zoning that you may not want to occur out there. So that clarifies the questions regarding proffers and conditional zoning.
Any questions?
Just one more question. So the proffers that are listed here, these are all subjected to the kind of use that they would...
Right, so most of those uses in there are permitted by right in that district. What they're saying is, we won't do those. If you approve the rezoning, those become not allowed.
Right. So if there's something that's not on this list, like, I don't see a museum on here, so if a museum...
That's allowed in there, and there are a few things they left in there.
Right.
Not many.
Right.
Because they said, we want you to know we're focused on what we're trying to do here. So, you know, we had raised a couple of concerns, there are some, you know, like junkyard type uses, we would not want to see that property used for, and so we want to make sure there was no chance that somebody shows up 10 years from now...
And try to do that.
And try to do something like that.
The only way that, so if they go, they stay in business, they sell it, Lisa and I buy it 10 years from now, want to put it in a junkyard, the only way we could do that is to come back to City Council.
And change the proffers.
Got it.
Exactly.
No junkyard. No junkyard.
I have not seen the email. Did you get the deed restrictions out?
Everything has been sent out.
Any questions on the deed restrictions?
They, they're in the box. You have the ocean marine property, the recorded covenants, and the staff report of the Planning Commission, which is Z19-07. You also, and that's actually three pieces in your box.
Okay. Shannon?
I know that, Mr. Baldwin, I may, I don't know if you can speak to this specifically. I know that last night, part of our discussion centered around the covenants. And what was in the covenants in terms of what could be allowed as it relates to currently ocean marine, under the current covenants, on item C, there were limitations to recreational passenger vessel services. And under those limitations, they can only refurbish pleasure boats and things like that. In addition to that, it says, "Said services shall not be provided to or for military vessels, freighters, boat carriers, tankers." You've probably seen this.
That's the deed restrictions, and so you're validating my memory.
Right, right. That's the deed restriction. So, so can you explain to us, with what the new affair lead is proposing, what is the process? Because obviously, with these covenants in place, based on that explanation in here, they could not do what they are proposing to do.
So I think the simplest way to describe it, the zoning is the city-enforced land use authority.
Right.
And that's basically saying, under our zoning, if the council wants to approve the rezoning, approve the proffers, you say, this is what we're going to allow you to do. However, they have deed restrictions from the prior property owner, in this case, it was the IDA at the time.
Right.
It puts all sorts of restrictions there. If you look through those, you'll see even as far as painting the building and changing landscaping, a lot of things covered in their deed restrictions. They would still be, and that's subject to enforcement by the EDA. That's not a city, like, it would not be a zoning violation if they went to try to do something. They would have enforcement that would come from the EDA saying you're violating the deed restrictions on which we convey the property. And that becomes a matter between those two parties.
Okay.
And ultimately, to make this all work out, both of those have to be matched up.
Yes.
You have to have the zoning with the proffers, and you'd have to have the deed restrictions match up so the uses could be permitted by both.
Okay.
The common stance to be really pointed, they would have to petition the EDA to change the deed restrictions. If the, the EDA agreed to that, then the new amended deed restrictions would have to be recorded in the circuit court.
Correct.
With the clerk.
That's correct. And that's where mayor, vice mayor, members of City Council, I said yesterday, with the advice of my office, it was more prudent that the issue come from a zoning perspective first and then align the deed afterwards.
I understand, but again, I created a hypothetical last night. Let's say that we like a particular deed restriction, and that's current, that the applicant, after the zoning, wants to go away.
Sure.
How does that get reconciled? And we... How does that get reconciled? And we said that we don't have a say in that, that it just happens to be the goodwill that we have with the EDA.
That's correct.
Paul?
I'd like to make my colleagues aware that we were talking about the junkyard. What we're proposing here is a junkyard and more. I've had the experience of working in an old neighbor's shipyard, the shipyards over here, and they are junkyards and more. So when we say that we don't want a junkyard, I want to make us aware of that. With this transaction, we're getting a junkyard and more.
Any further questions, Bob? Thank you.
Yes, mayor, vice mayor, and members of city council, we have eight city managers' reports before you this evening. First is the transferring savings to the retirement fund. It's an adoption of an ordinance appropriating the sum of $6.6,548,276 in savings from the pension obligation bond refunding for the FY2020 debt service fund, and transfer first, $1.466,723 of said amount to the Portsmouth supplemental retirement system, and $5,81,553 of said amount to the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System. You remember in June that the reappropriation for the bond sales for refinancing was conducted. As indicated, then it would take about six months for the first monies to come. In year two, you will get $1.5 million, and in year three, you will get the said. And it will be about this time of year that that money will be coming forward. The next is the Paradise Creek Nature Park Playground and Shade Structure. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a donation from the Elizabeth River Project in the amount of $31,612.52, and appropriating said funds in the Paradise Creek Nature Park Project Line Item in the FY2020 Capital Improvement Fund Budget for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation and Tourism for the continual development of the nature park playground. The next is an adoption of an ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness program funds in the amount of $700 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating said funds in the FY2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Services. The next is the transfer of match for local emergency management program grant, from adoption of an ordinance, transferring the sum of $57,992 from the salary line item of the Department of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Services Section of the FY2020 General Fund Budget to the FY2020 Grants Fund to serve as a required local match for the local emergency management grant program. And I will share with you, that is a part of this grant, the condition of the grant is that the salary of the deputy coordinator of emergency management was used to meet the match requirement, and the payroll-related expenses are charged to both the fire department and then back to the grant, and that's a requirement. This does not affect the individual salary benefits of the classification, but it is a part of the match, because that will be the position that will be overseeing it. The next is the family partnership meeting incentive funds. This is an adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $3,000, and appropriating said amount in the FY2020 Social Services Fund for the family partnership meeting incentive program. This money is used, and tonight I think we have our last foster care family that's coming forward, to bring families together when there is going to be an adoption, and give time for the department to work with relational-focused approaches to families getting comfortable and all of that with the children. So this is where and what this fund is for. The next is an emergency food and shelter program, Phase 36. It's an adoption of an ordinance accepting an emergency food and shelter National Board Program Grant in amounts of $12,400 from the Department of Household Homeland Security, and appropriating said sum in the FY2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Service to assist eligible Portsmouth citizens who have emergency food, shelter, or utility needs. And the Portsmouth Department of Social Services has been selected as a local recipient organization to participate in Phase 36 of this emergency food and shelter program. The next is the City Council 2020 Calendar of Meetings, and it's an adoption of a motion to implement the 2020 Calendar of City Council Meetings. Last and the eighth is the Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Unexpended FY2019 Funding. The issue is an adoption of two ordinances addressing unexpended funds from the FY2019 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget. A is the adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate encumbered but unexpended funds from the FY2019 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget in the total amount of $237,202 to the FY2020 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget. B is an adoption of an ordinance to acknowledge the revision to the reversion to the city of funds in the amount of $3,632,494 that were originally appropriated by city code to the Portsmouth Public Schools FY2019 General Fund Budget, and were neither encumbered nor expended by Portsmouth Public Schools during the FY2019. Two, to appropriate $723,039 of said funds to the FY2020 Capital Improvement Fund Budget for three projects to benefit Portsmouth Public Schools, including the replacement of the Churchill High School track, the replacement of school bus security cameras, and the replacement of school furniture. And three, to reserve the balance of the said funds within the FY2019 fund balance for future appropriations as city council shall deem appropriate. Those are the eight items that are before you tonight, members of city council.
Oh, that second ordinance, I did not realize provision three is listed in the agenda until this morning, and I tried to contact as many of you all as I could. It's been kind of a crummy day as far as time is concerned. I recommend that we amend paragraph five as per the top sheet. I'm passing out both the ordinance, the second sheet is the order of ordinance as it is, while I agenda, would you pass this out there, please? And I recommend that we go ahead and appropriate those funds now in their entirety to the Schools General Fund for use in the fiscal year 2019, 2020. And again, I'm sorry that we ran out of time. I had unknown that that was the provision of the ordinance yesterday, it wasn't. So with that, anybody support this?
The liaisons, we had our meeting, actually, prior to the meeting, and there's been a lot of discussion surrounding this. My understanding, and I guess I'm going to ask Dr. Patton and our attorney to jump in here as well, but the appropriations are supposed to happen on June 30th, and we're now at December 10th. Those funds had not been reappropriated until now, don't know what the holdup is, why it took so long. But I know that there was some conversation, and this has probably come up in some of our meetings, but as the liaisons, we have received information that the schools wanted to change the contract or whatever our agreement is, so that the, any funds that they would have left for reappropriation would just be automatically kept in the risk management fund. That's not, of course, what our law calls for, and our attorney advised us otherwise, because by law, they are supposed to return funds to the city, and then we would then have the appropriate body to investigate or review those funds and deem what would be eligible to return back to them at that time. And I did have a conversation with other liaisons, I spoke with my liaison on council, Nathan Clark and I spoke, and I also spoke with liaison Cardell Patillo from the school board side, and there was a 35-minute conversation between us on why the funds weren't sent over after the June 30th timeframe, and why are we, you know, now into almost, you know, six, you know, five months into, you know, them getting returned. Did we know what they actually still needed those funds for? And they mentioned that they had given a big notebook to our attorney, and our attorney said that he didn't get the information until Thursday, right before we were ready to go into our meeting, which was part of the reason why our meeting was canceled, because there was a lot of miscommunication. We didn't appear to have what we needed to move forward. They wanted to have a conversation with the two liaisons, the council liaisons, about reappropriation, and we don't have an authority to have that kind of conversation with them. That is something that comes to us as a body, and then we make that determination. So if our attorney legal can give us some updates on where we stood with their request, they wanted to change the contract so that the funds would automatically stay in their possession rather than having them to revert back to the city.
Before he answers, it is clear, though, that the money has flowed.
On Friday, at 10 o'clock, the 3.6.
So they have met the requirements of the state code, that the money come back.
Friday it did.
Yeah. The issue before us, how much of that 3.6 did we reappropriate? In my position is that we do appropriate it all now. And let's let the attorney answer her question, and then I'll recognize Shannon and then Nate.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, some, I want to say, nine months ago, school board in the process prior to executing the risk management fund agreement, wanted to add additional language to have city school board unencumbered funds automatically rolled into the risk management fund. We had some conversations back and forth. I explained to them that that was not the process, and what the city council agreed to last year when this, the process was set up for addressing health and risk management claims, which I understand to have been the issue. In that the discussion, after a period of time, the school system did decide to execute the agreement as it was proffered by the city and with the agreement, understanding that they had the opportunity to come back and make their claims for any overage in the risk management fund. As the vice mayor said, approximately a week before the Thanksgiving break, I was provided documentation, Mr. Falk and I sat down and had a meeting. I have a meeting with, this week, in order to complete the review of those documents. And I've explained to Mr. Falk that the risk reserve fund exists as it is right now, $5.1 million, and there's a claim for $2.9 million. The issue then was that council had not contemplated, nor that I understand they wanted to contemplate having that fund increase automatically year to year based on any funds that were unencumbered. So as I explained to Mr. Falk, as we move through the claim process, that is a separate matter from the reappropriation process, which is in front of you. We did have that conversation, school board member Patillo understood it would take us into December and perhaps a little bit further to have that. We believe we'll have an answer, and I'll be in a position to present to the school board as it relates to the $2.9 million they have an issue with. The only other thing I would add, in that conversation amongst the liaisons, I also made it clear that if they think they have an overage in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, they could begin to send the paperwork now, as opposed to getting a six-inch binder at the end of a year, they could send paperwork now, and we can begin processing and reviewing as the year goes along. And that was set out in the agreement going forward. And so that is the current state as we exist now with regard to addressing their 2018, 2019 issues. I have not, as of yet, although I said it verbally, I have not sent an email to Mr. Falk to say, feel free to send your 20 issues for, as you go forward.
Before I recognize you, to follow up on a point, that doesn't have to be, they're not, that does not have to be resolved for us to appropriate the 2.9 to their general fund with no strings, is that correct?
Mayor, the only thing I would say is, the original request, and this is because I've said this to both school board members and council members, the original request from the school system was to essentially reappropriate the money back to the schools, and it never come over to the city. That was...
That clearly has not happened now. If the money has come over, we can appropriate funds to the school at any time that we desire, and it doesn't have to have justification from the school. Isn't that correct?
It does not have to have, I'm not clear what you mean when you say justification from the school, but certainly the city council is the party that reappropriates funds.
That's the bottom line.
Correct. The city council is the property, is the authority that reappropriates funds. What staff has tried to do is to align both administratively and the discussions between the two bodies with the intent and expectation as it was delivered last year, and has been delivered at least to this point. Where we, where I have pushed back, be it on behalf of the administration or the city, has been when there's been an attempt to vary from what council wanted to do and said it wanted to do last year. And so we've tried to stay on that track up until this point.
But it's fair to say that the schools have asked that the whole amount of 3.6 be reappropriated back to the schools?
They have asked for two, no, 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 let me, they have phrased it that way, mayor.
Okay, that's fine.
Part of it has been for CIP projects, which wouldn't go back to the school, and part of it has been to automatically raise the risk reserve fund.
On their side?
No, 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 on our side, from 5.1 to 7.1, or 7.9.
Okay.
The first request was to...
We can grant that request by changing this language to read that is not appropriated to their general fund, but to their risk management fund.
But so far, nobody else supports that, so it's more the law.
The board used to discuss it.
Right, but you haven't recognized anybody else. You're pushing your agenda without going to Shannon and going through everybody else to discuss it.
Fair point. Are you finished?
I just want to be precise in the language. The first request was to put it in the reserve fund. The very first request was to return it back to the school board's general fund. Then it changed to put it into the reserve fund, which is the 5.1 that we're dealing with claims right now.
And to speak to your comment, Nate, I'm not pushing the agenda, I'm following up on questions that I thought were logical as he talked. Shannon and Nate?
Yeah, a couple of things. I've listened to the conversation, I've looked at this quite intensely. One of the things I just want to clarify, I just heard you say that the schools have a claim for $2.9 million. That's what you communicated. One of the things, before I say what I'm going to say, I think it's appropriate for us to begin to heal this relationship, first of all, between the schools and the city. Somebody's got to be the big person in this, in this situation. I just want to preface that. Secondly, I believe the schools have professionals in the areas of finance and other... Secondly, I believe the schools have professionals in the areas of finance and other areas that are capable of doing what they need to do to run their business, that being of the schools. With that said, one of the things that I looked at was, how do we begin to do that? So if the claims that they have outstanding on, under risk management, which I understand their claims of health insurance, disability, and other things, which is what the risk management fund that the city set up is put in place to handle, if those claims total $2.9 million, then in good faith, we need to transfer the $2.9 million to the schools from that fund that we have set up, the risk management fund. We have gotten back, you just confirmed to me, that we have received the 3.6 million. So they acted in good faith, whatever we want to call it, they sent the money. We have the money in the risk management, so it is my proposal that we take the 2.9 out of the 5.1 and send it for their claims. In addition to that, we've got the 3.6 million. The money's the same. We're going to take the 2.9 that was returned to us out of the 3.6, and I did a little math, just so we're all on the same page. Also, there's some CIP numbers of 723,000, and there's an unencumbered amount of $237,000. The CIP, although it's not going directly to the schools, it's still going to needs of the schools. So it's still money going to them. The additional 237, which is some unencumbered stuff, that total, folks, is 3.869696. The amount that was returned to us was how much?
3.6. It's right here.
No, the actual amount supposedly was, well, the total funds that was supposed to be returned was 3.632494, I guess, somewhere around there?
Yes.
So, I mean...
And that's in there.
I just proposed it in order for us to move this forward. They have acted in good faith. We need to act in good faith. We need to give them the money that they need to operate so that they can take care of what they need to take care of. That's what I'm willing to vote for, and that's what I propose.
Could you say that one more time? You lost me a minute there.
You want me to summarize it?
Yeah.
They sent back the 3.6 million. They have provided information supporting the claims to be paid of $2.9 million.
But that's money that's already over here in the city.
Right, we have that at the 5.1 million. We just send them the check, right, we send them the check for the 2.9. They're made whole on that. The other 2.9 that we got back with the 3.6, we just put it back in the reserve fund to make that fund whole.
Well, in order for that to happen, you've got to appropriate the money. It's got to go into the reserve fund.
Well, that, okay. I mean, we have, do we not have the authority to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But in any case, it requires an amendment to this ordinance, and that's the punchline.
We were getting there. I understand that, because if we go with what's here today, then we operate under what's written, and so I proposed that amendment so that we make them whole, we do this in good faith. It creates an opportunity for us to build a better relationship going forward, and I think as we go forward, that's going to be critical in making sure that we support what our schools are doing, and I've said this from day one, that I'm here to make sure that our school system has the appropriate funds that it needs to carry out its business.
So it's a backfill to the risk?
It's a backfill to the risk.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nate?
The, well, as Vice Mayor has spoken, you know, our liaison meetings have gone on and on, and I don't look at that 3.6 or whatever it is they returned back. I don't like the word "good faith" because the law requires them to do that. That should have occurred back this summer, and it's been discussed for so long, it's like they keep finding different ways, like they said they wanted it automatically reappropriated to them. No, that's not going to happen. That's not how the law is. And the way this is now, to me, I'm comfortable with the wording tonight because it doesn't mean we can't come back in January and reappropriate some funds to them. It doesn't have to be a single thing. In my mind, it should be bifurcated. Tonight, the money should be returned. Then we could look at their request and the documentation, because it's set up, that 5.1 was set up for them to provide the documentation to draw the money out of the 5.1, and so far, that proper documentation hasn't been passed forward because we were questioning that at our last liaison meeting. So until that actual documentation is there for them to draw the money out of the 5.1, and, you know, so it's just, it's just a continuing thing. So, you know, we're looking at over 3 million, and we just voted, you know, unanimously, I believe, on the previous budget to increase their budget by 2.1 million by taking it out of various accounts, 2.6, sorry, it's even bigger. So 2.6. So basically, they're asking for a million more back that they didn't spend than what their budget was increased by starting July the 1st. So I'm comfortable with the wording that's on the agenda tonight, not that we can't come back in January with the proper information and reallocate some money to them, because it doesn't have to be done at one time, and this just, you know, coming up at this point tonight, I don't think it's, you know, I'm not ready to make a decision on giving that money back without all the documentation that not only the liaisons have been requesting, but also our attorney has been requesting from Mr. Falk and the school board. So not that I wouldn't approve that in January, but until we get all the documentation, I'm not comfortable doing that this time, and I'm fine with going forward with the resolution as written.
All right. Phil? Two things. I'm still puzzled why the school system can't meet the June 30th deadline. You know, everybody's aware of it. Shannon, you mentioned that they have professional people there. I think they do. Question is, why can't the professional people meet the deadline, the legal deadline? The other thing is, what is the status of the backup for the money? Did you mention you had a thick folder that was delivered?
I do, and we're going through that, and as I said before, my expectation is that I will have some maybe minor additional requests for Mr. Falk at the end of the week, and my expectation is to get back with the school board as the ordinance requires early in January so that I can report to them. My obligation is to report back to them.
And to us on the backup?
Certainly, you will be aware with regard to what is appropriately coming out of that fund, certainly. Yes, yes, that's correct.
And you have a...
Well, I wouldn't want the kids to suffer because we don't think that they're doing their job properly. I think the most important thing is us to concern ourselves with is our documentation and us doing what we need to do to support the school board. However, we need to still continue to ask for those reference papers and documentations that we need and make them more aware of the importance of the situation.
This one?
I'm with Nathan on this, and Lisa, I, I would feel better if we were sitting here and Mr. Ashley were able to say, I've been able to recommend or appropriate X dollars out of risk management, which is what it's there for, or risk reserve fund, and they have this much more, and we need this to cover that. I don't see what the crisis is to let that play itself out and come back in January and see what we want to appropriate to both funds.
Yes. Let me ask you to look at what I have proposed. Are you comfortable with striking the word in the second line, the words "general fund", and substitute that "general fund" of, and substitute the words "risk management" for the public schools as established by the city code? What that does, it appropriates the 2.9 into that fund so that it becomes a total of seven, eight million dollars. And it doesn't flow until the documents are approved by the city attorney.
They might not need that much.
Right. Without the documentation, we can't make that decision.
I mean, they haven't spent a dime, yeah.
You can put as much money in that, it's a risk management fund.
You can put as much, but you can't take it back out.
Then we couldn't...
It could be utilized for other things. That's our determination.
I get that.
So, but if we're, if we lock it in that fund, then we no longer had to say so on that money. It's in that fund for them to use. So until that documentation's there, you're right, we might not need that full amount. So, you know, we're not even talking about a full month before we're back in January. Gives us time to get the information.
Okay. Shannon?
In that amount, if, to kind of understand what the question is, in that amount with the $2.9 million in the risk management, let's say if it was $2 million after the claims were reviewed, those dollars that are left over, can they return them back to the city, or once it's transferred? I'm just asking the question. Once it's transferred, they have complete control over the 2.9? I'm still, I'm still in support of the transferring of 2.9 million.
Well, what this would do is put that into the fund.
Right.
And then, let's say you paid to me.
Right.
And then the fund would be at 6 million.
Question, comment? The city manager has drafted the resolution, and I think we need to follow that as is written. She's given us our direction based on what the code is, what the law is, and that's what we should follow. We don't need to retract it with anything else, try to play political moves with two people on the school board who I know who have requested this information. So we need to proceed with how the city manager had this drafted up. If they need money to play those, to pay those claims, there is a process for which they call on the city attorney and ask for those funds out of the 5.1 million fund. If they had claims that needed to be paid anytime from January to right now, they had the authority to send a letter or send whatever paperwork it is to the city attorney and request it. Now, they trying to be slick to me because they asked to automatically have this thing to just automatically roll over, and we told them no. So they now trying to come through a back door and still automatically have this sent over. If they want to get any money out of that 5.1 million to pay claims, send the paperwork to our city attorney, and we will pay the claims. I proceed that we go with it as written by the city manager.
All right, I think we have thoroughly discussed this. Let's go to the next item, which is City Council Liaison Reports. Let's put... Paul?
No.
Yes, one quick thing. Yesterday, I attended the Tower of Community College Workforce Solutions Committee meeting, and one thing, I had brought it up before about one of the programs they have for teaching CDLs and getting people certified, they have a program with HRT that they send individuals there, and once they graduate and get their CDL, they already have a job with HRT. They have also partnered with the City of Virginia Beach Waste Management and Public Works, and they're doing the same there to get people trained to be able to hire these individuals. And I would just like to see if we could look into possibly partnering with them, because I know, you know, historically, it's like some other departments. We get CDL operators, and they'll leave for other localities, jurisdictions, and I think it would be nice if we could partner. And I'm just going to pass the contact information card over to Dr. Patton, and at some point, they can make the appropriate contacts if it's something that will work for us.
Shannon?
Not, not anything against them.
We have a need for a closed session, this is our motion.
City manager, two things on my report that I mentioned quickly. I'd like to call to your attention that the completion of the rewrite of the zoning will be completed at the end of, as we say, at the end of this month, which is December 31st. Starting January 2nd, the document will go as required by the state and law online from January 2nd to the 31st of March. That will be time for the public to have input, that will be time for the commission, the planning commission to have public hearings and all of that. So if you refer back to your, your, the City Council Executive Brief, those states are in there, and all of the information.
Okay.
Okay? That's it.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn this session?
I move to go into closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.88 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice specifically regarding gray machines. And B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.77 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 19003277, and 19004481, and Integrated Management Group versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case number 19002742.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Adam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Ms. Semus.
Yes.
Mayor Robb.